Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:00 PM and it is time for the City Council meeting. So I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. First up on the agenda is the roll call. Terrell.
Mayor Gill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dukes. Councilmember Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Mann.
Here.
Councilmember Starkey.
Here.
Wonderful. If you can please rise for the invocation by Councilmember Buckland and followed by the pledge allegiance by Councilmember Starkey.
If you'll bow your heads with me, please. Dear wise and loving Father, we're grateful for your presence in this public meeting. Thank you for this day and the many blessings you provide each of us. This evening, we ask for your guidance during this meeting and the decisions that will be made here tonight. We also ask you to be with just the families of our police officers and with our police officers and the family of the tragic events of the last week that you may give them some consolation in all of the events that occurred. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those that live and work in Yuba City and the surrounding communities. In the most blessed name that I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, we've got several proclamations here to give today. So first up on the proclamation that we have, I know we have on our agenda to John Munger from the Farm Bureau who's not here today, so we'll move on to the next one, which is a proclamation for March as a Young Professional Month. And I'm going to present this to Eric McIntosh. Eric, come on up here to the front.
We've got the proclamation, but we've got a little summary, so I'd be glad to read this. Please welcome a young professional, Eric McIntosh, from Zoom Imaging Solutions, Inc. March is a month of young professionals. The entire country is on the cusp of a major generational shift. The largest generation since the baby boomers will soon make up more than half of the workforce at 80 million strong. Young professionals are developing professionals, opportunities and lifestyles, amenities that make our region desirable and which is essential to the future competitiveness of the city of Yuba City. Young professionals will convene the first local Young Professional Emergence Summit on March 21st, 2014 in Sacramento, California. The accomplishments of young professionals deserve acknowledgements, information, and celebration by the city of Yuba City. So now therefore, let it be resolved that I Cash Gill, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby declare the month of March as a month of young professional.
There's a little summary there, but here's a wonderful proclamation to yourself and congratulations. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much, Mayor and the Yuba City Council. Myself, I'm from the City of Roseville, also live in Sacramento, met the mayor a few years back, and he was a great man and a great helpfulness. The City of Yuba City joins Rancho Cudova, Folsom, Sacramento, City of Sacramento, excuse me, Sacramento County, also Placer County, City of Roseville, West Sacramento, Davis, as all acknowledging March as the official month of the young professional. There's a lot going on in Sacramento, especially with the new downtown arena, and we really hope that the surrounding cities, Roseville, Folsom, Yuba City, Marysville, Davis, are all going to thrive in spite of that. So we look forward to being a part of it and look forward to seeing Yuba City a part of it as well. Thank you.
See here, next up on the agenda, I believe, is a recognition to, what do we have here? Let me see. Eric. Yep. Eric, come on up.
Please welcome Eric Brubaker, Life Guard at Goshack Aquatic Park. Eric began his career as a life guard and swim instructor for the City of Yuba City in 2007 when he was 16-years-old. In 2010, Eric left Yuba City to pursue his degree in Santa Barbara, California. In 2013, Eric returned to Yuba City and was rehired by the city as a pool manager. On Wednesday, February 19th, 2014, around 11:00 AM, at the Goshack Aquatic Park, Eric responded immediately to a guest face down, unresponsive, unconscious, on the ground. Eric immediately went into action, began CPR, and administering rescue breathing until emergency medical service arrived. Thanks to Eric's quick response, reaction, care, the guest survived and later had a three-way heart bypass and is doing well. On behalf of the City Council, I Cash Gill, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, do hereby present the Award of Excellence to Eric Brubaker. You are here to be commended for your quick response to a simulation that saved a life. So on behalf of the entire council and as the Mayor of the City of Yuba City, let me present you with a couple of stuff here. First one is a certificate, Award of Excellence, to yourself. Secondly, is our gold coin, a medal that is given to very few, but this is a coin of the City of Yuba City. It's got our Palma Street and our wonderful palm trees, but on behalf of the council and as the mayor, thank you so much for diving in and doing what you did and saving a life and keep up the good work, and we're very, very proud to have you as an employee of the City of Yuba City.
Thank you very much for all my friends and family for being here. I'm really humbled by this honor. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have another proclamation to Mike Bullard. Mike, come on up.
Mike was our Yuba City Police Officer of the Year, and congratulations, Yuba City Police Officer Department Gang Investigator, Mike Bullard, 2013 Officer of the Year. As a young man, Mike Bullard developed a love for sports, physical fitness, and desire to become a member of the elite Navy SEALs. Mike joined the Navy in 2000, competing the toughest training in the military, and reached his lifetime goal of becoming an elite United States Navy SEAL. Mike was deployed for two tours in Iraq, where he served with great honor. In 2006, he joined the Yuba City Police Department family and has been assigned as a patrol officer, range master, gang investigator, and a SWAT team member. Mike contributes his career success to the support of his loving wife Shannon, who's here today with us, and his two children, and the support and friendship from the men and women of the Yuba City Police Department. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I Cash Gill, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council and citizens we serve, do hereby congratulate Gang Investigator Mike Bullard on the occasion of being selected as Yuba City Police Department's 2013 Officer of the Year. Down on his 18th day of March, 2014, the City of Yuba City, County of Yuba City, State of California, it is my honor to present to you a proclamation here, which is signed, which lists out all of your accomplishments, and one of the things I didn't mention, obviously, is you were a part of the Navy SEALs, but Team Seven. And then in addition to that, on behalf of the entire City Council, we sincerely thank you for protecting, serving all of us within this community and keeping this community very, very safe. So congratulations on being Officer of the Year. That's yours. A few words.
I was actually hoping for the Key to the City. But no. In all seriousness, no. I couldn't imagine representing a finer community and a finer city, and especially a finer police department. Very humbled and honored to receive this award, and the reason I do it, as the reason many of my fellow coworkers do it, is for each and every one of you to represent the community, our friends and family, who all live here. So thank you very much.
This should be a key, but it won't reach in the police. Any other building but the police department.
I'll make a copy after. Wow.
What?
We're almost done. Couple hours, we'll be all.
You get three minutes each, no matter what, so.
Wow, that whole section. That's.
Okay, I guess we tear our coats and ties off now.
Don't you guys have anywhere to go?
Well, we're almost done, just staff.
We need to have that guy move over to this section.
Okay, great, yeah.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you very much, Michael. Okay, we're off to item number four is ordinances. Ordnance prohibiting camping on public property and public right of ways within the corporate city limits of Yuba City, presented by Jeremy Garcia, Assistant Chief of Police.
To adopt a revised ordinance specific to overnight camping in the Yuba City rear bottoms and addressing all public property and public right of ways. This is the same issue that was brought before you on March 4th by Chief Landon, and essentially where the proposed ordinance provides for some comprehensive language that addresses some areas that weren't covered in our existing ordinance. The existing ordinance covers city parks and what is essentially now the Feather River Parkway, but the new and proposed ordinance would cover all public property and all public right of ways.
Any questions for the Assistant Chief on?
Nope. To the mayor?
Yes.
I would move the recommendation.
I'll second that.
Motion to second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Public communication, you're welcome to encourage if participated in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Terrell, do we have any written requests?
No, we do not.
Okay. Item number five is, or actually item number six, appearance of interested citizens. Members of the public may address the City Council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Anybody from the public wishes to address the City Council on items that are not on the agenda? Okay. Item number seven is minutes of March, actually consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time council votes on the motion list. Members of the City Council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Anybody from the council or anybody from the staff wishes to have any items polled or discussed separately?
Yes, I'd like to pull item number eight.
Yes, item number eight is coming out. Staff wishes to bring that back at a different time. So item numbers eight, can I get approval on the consent calendar with item number seven and nine?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. General items number.
On item number eight was, did you want to?
Mm-hmm. Oh.
I was asking.
I thought you were just going to bring it back at another time.
Yeah, I believe he's bringing it back at a different time. No, but are you, we're polling item number eight because you're going to have more time to bring it back at a different time.
Mayor, just a point of clarification, actually, I may have misspoken to you. He'd like to pull item eight just to have a matter of clarification. Ben has spoken with the city attorney and believes that he might have some additional language to add to the recommendation that would clarify it.
Okay. Thank you, Ben.
Item before us tonight is in regards to the PG&E gas line easement for the West Feather River levy. Terrell, do we have an exhibit? PG&E has sent a request to us in coordination with Subufka that they're wanting to relocate an existing natural gas line. The existing gas line is the purple, and they're wanting to put the new line in the location of the black. In order to facilitate that, they need to get a utility easement from the City of Yuba City, since we are the fee title owners of the property under the levy, and the city's coordinating with Subufka Levy District One to make sure that that, the terms of that easement are correct. And so to facilitate the construction of the rerouting of that gas line, PG&E has requested that we dedicate an easement to them. With that dedication, staff has requested that we, they pay for administration costs, and then also that they quitclaim any existing easements that they have for the existing back to Levy District One and/or the Yuba City that has any rights for that easement. So with the resolution tonight, we're asking, there's still some terms being worked out, Levy District One, in the wording of the easement regarding use and permitting, but due to the schedule with the Central Valley Flood Protection Board for the permitting, they would like us to proceed with authorization to allow the city manager to execute that easement when that, when the small revisions to the easement are changed within the next few days. So with, so we're recommending tonight that we authorize the city manager to execute that easement deed with compliance with Levy District One and the City of Yuba City.
Great. Any questions for Ben?
Yep.
Okay, not?
I move staff's recommendation.
Got a motion?
Help if I turn this on. Just to help clarify, we'll just add some language to the suggested recommendation. We'll just add some language stating, including any minor revisions to the easement deed that are needed to finalize the language of said easement deed.
Correct. Thank you for that clarification.
Well put.
Thank you. Got a motion? Need a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Next up is general items number 10, utility payment processing and utility bill printing and mailing proposal, including enhanced electronic options. Mr. Morrison.
I almost did it again. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We bring before you today Utility Payment Processing and Utility Bill Printing and Mailing Proposal, RFP 14-02, including enhanced electronic options. The purpose is to provide enhanced service to our customers, our water and wastewater rate-paying customers, for printing, mailing, and e-solution options for the city's utility bills and late notices. This is something that staff has looked at before. Back in 2007, we did an analysis, tried to make the numbers pencil out. At that time, with the current bids, we just couldn't do it. So just in the recent year, staff has reevaluated and looked at, did another RFP. The RFP attracted seven proposers, seven bids. We evaluated these bids on a set of criteria, and InfoSend of Anaheim floated to the top. The, here tonight with InfoSend to present a little bit more about the enhanced services that we're proposing is Kelly Finnegan.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I just wanted to provide some information about the services that we're planning on providing for the city, looking forward to working with you going forward. Let me know if there's any questions. Just wanted to give you some background on our proficiency in working with California utilities. We have 184 clients in California, 140 of which are California utilities, so very big in the utility space and working with exactly the services that we're going to provide for the city. So we provide print and mail, outsourced billing, as well as e-payments, and then we work with a company to provide IVR billing. So some of the things that we're offering, consumption history, the grouping of bills into one envelope going out, saving your materials costs and postage costs, 36 months of billing history, so bill reprints are something that I think are an issue at the moment, that will solve that. Change of address updates, as well as other custom suppressions that'll save money. And then we also have an online bill pay service, so the ability to view and pay your bill online, PCI Level 1 compliant, which means that it's the utmost in security protecting the city from liability, as well as protecting your ratepayers. Again, 36 months of bill history and payment history, customer communications, and the ability to load multiple accounts. So you can pay online with credit card and ACH, which is e-check. So easy to use, the enrollment process takes under two minutes. Customers can input their own email address, their own password, they can manage their paperless settings. The site is multilingual. We have a Google Translate tool that we've built in, so they can pick a number of languages to translate the website to. And it's completely branded to look like the City of Yuba City's website. So we'll screen the site. We host, host the portal and accept the payments and the security liability, but it looks like the city's site. And also, the site is mobile optimized, so for people using phones or tablets. And then in conjunction with our payment processing partner, TWI, we're offering an IVR, which is the ability to pay by phone. So 24/7 uptime, inbound and outbound calls, and English or Spanish options. And it's also a messaging tool, so you can reach out to your customers, say, for information about the drought, or to ask customers to reduce their water usage. And this is also something that's used for shut offs. So you're able to send an outbound call to customers facing water shut off, and those customers receiving that call have the option to press 2 to pay their bill. The updates that the city will receive will significantly reduce those shut offs. Another thing that we're offering is the ability to press 0 to speak to customer service representative during business hours, and that's something that we configure based on your business hours. A few other features, most that we went through, recorded voice or text-to-speech. It's not going to sound like a robot on the phone, so we work with you to come with the voice prompts. And like I said, for the delinquencies, we're seeing a reduction of 30% to 70% of water shut offs with this IVR service available. And that's it. Thank you for having me.
Any questions from staff?
Great report.
Okay. If there's no questions.
I was going to move to approve.
Okay. Got a motion?
I'll second over here on the east side of the dais.
Okay. Got a motion to second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Spencer. Item number 11, expansion of the city's sphere of influence, steadily boundary line for new development opportunities. Mr. Bush.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This before you tonight is a first part of a potentially exciting project for the City of Yuba City, and I'm pleased to present this to you tonight for your consideration. Specifically, what we're looking at is, back in October of last year, the City Council, along with the Sutter County Border Supervisors, held a joint special workshop, and among other things discussed at that meeting was the possibility of expanding the city's sphere of influence boundary south of Boog Road to create some new development opportunities that would result in job creating opportunities for the city and for the region. At that particular meeting, the city looked at a variety of different potential areas that are within the existing city limits, but came to the conclusion that south of city limits might be the best possible alternative. And at that meeting, both elected groups directed their staffs to start looking at the potential for doing that. So this right here is our current city limits. The red represents the city limits, the green represents the sphere of influence. And this was the exhibit that we shared with you back in October and looked at, evaluating where's some opportunities within the city. And after some lengthy discussion, it worked out that down here, south of the city limits, was the most logical opportunity for us because of access issues and then lack of infrastructure issues up over here. So this is the area that was put in question, and again, this is our existing sphere of influence and city limits down here. But as part of the Sutter County General Plan update, they included a boundary line here of a possible sphere of influence adjustment. There's no particular science that was put in place to come up with this boundary, but it represented a fairly logical boundary at the time to be included. And what that does, it doesn't give us anything really legally, but it sets the tone for some dialogue discussion about expanding our sphere down in this area. Here's a blow up of that area. Boog Road again down here, Highway 99 down here. Well, since that time in October, we've received a development project proposal from Newcombe Ranch Group. And Newcombe Ranch is a group of private property owners that is looking to propose a mixed-use master plan south of Boog Road. Specifically, they're looking to expand the city's sphere of influence boundary for approximately 210 acres. And that project would include a boundary adjustment to the sphere of influence, pre-annexation zoning and land use, going through LAFCO, a technical master plan, the required environmental review, and the development agreement. In addition to that, they're also looking to do an expanded technical master plan for beyond their property down to Stewart Road between the city limits. And I'll show some maps with you in just a moment for that. Again, here's that possible sphere of influence boundary line down here, existing city limits here. So where they're looking at is that there's approximately 161 acres owned by the Newcombe Ranch Group, and that's denoted here, okay? Highway 99, Stewart Road. They also have other property owners that represent control of about 48 acres up over here, and that connects with the existing city limits at this point. The expanded technical master plan that I referenced just a moment ago is this area right here. So it goes, connects with the existing city limits down to Stewart Road. So we've included in this item their proposal to you, to the city, to go ahead and process that project. But one of the things that staff wanted to include as part of this presentation to you tonight is that this represents a unique opportunity for us to go out and talk to other folks about coming into the city's sphere of influence. And again, here's that boundary line that we identified in the county general plan. And so while these folks are coming to the table, these different ones here, and we're doing some technical studies over here as part of this project, staff believes that it's important to go ahead and talk to these other property owners out here about the possibility of expanding the sphere, and I'll share that with you here in more detail. So tonight, what we're recommending is that before we get started with the project, is that we conduct a public outreach effort. To do so, we would use a consultant to survey property owners out there to explain all the processes involved in sphere of influence versus city limits. We would share with them, you know, that process and find out their level of interest. Are they interested? Do they even know that it's available? And then we would give them a specified time to respond, so it couldn't just be sitting out there and hanging on to it. Once that survey was complete, and we would come back to the City Council at a future meeting to share with you our findings, and then at that time, we would propose potential boundaries, as well as funding methodology for going forward. Why are we doing that? Why are we recommending going beyond the proposal that's before you tonight? Well, any expansion of the sphere requires a lot of work. It requires a municipal services review by LAFCO and a lot of other technical studies. We basically have to demonstrate that regardless of the size of the expansion, whether it's five acres or 500 acres, we have to do those technical studies, and we have to show that the city's able to provide the necessary services to those properties. It's a timely process, so it's not something that a developer can approach the city and say, hey, I want to do something right away without going through this process first. And so our thinking is that let's just do this once. Let's go back and talk to all these people in here so that, again, it gives us greater flexibility in potentially expanding the city's limits for things like job housing balances or future economic growth opportunities.
Aaron, just a quick question. If you go back to that map, that map there, you're talking about outreach to the people below, but what about people on the other side of Stewart Road or other side of the highway, you know, where that red line kind of goes, right there, all of that stuff?
Yes, we would include that. So essentially, what we're suggesting is that based on that boundary being out there, and that was something that a long time ago, when the City Council met with the board and asked for some consideration of this, we would go out and approach all the property owners in this area, which would also include these people in the green area here. And one of the things that I wanted to provide you with is a distinction between the sphere of influence and the city limits, okay? Because there might be concern as we go out and talk to these people that they do or they do not want to be within the city. But again, the, it's seen here by our existing boundaries, the city limits in red and our sphere out here in green. This just gives us the opportunity at a future date. If you're within the sphere, it means you're still operating in the county and complying with all their guidelines, not the city guidelines. All this does is gives us the opportunity in the future to come back and do future consideration to annex into the city if and when the property owners are ready. So that's kind of this statement here, and I'll spare you the reading and all that, but the sphere of influence is basically a probability plan for where we could grow, where urban development should go, based on services. It does not require city zoning or annexation into the city, whereas with the city limits, to annex into the consideration to annex into the city, if and when the property owners are ready. So that's kind of this statement here, and I'll spare you the reading and all that, but the sphere of influence is basically a probability plan for where we could grow, where urban development should go, based on services. It does not require city zoning or annexation into the city. Whereas with the city limits, to annex into the city, it does require pre-annexation zoning, and it does require LAFCO approval. So that's what the applicant is proposing as part of their project, is pre-annexation zoning, and going through the LAFCO process to bring these components in here. So, since we're opening that door, if you will, we figure we just might as well ask the question, put a timeline on it, so we can come back and only do this one time, so that if in the future, there's opportunities, they don't have to go through this year-and-a-half, two-year-long process, just to ask that question again. So, our recommendation to you tonight is to direct us to go forward with that consultant selection, and get started with the outreach efforts, and based on those findings, we'll bring that back to the council, and we'll get started on this exciting project.
Questions for Aaron from council members?
No.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Are we having a public media hearing, or is this it?
No.
You might offer, Aaron, I don't know if the applicant wants to come and address the council on this at all, or?
A representative from Newcombe Ranch is in the audience tonight, if you have any questions, or would like them to say anything.
Would any members of the Newcombe Ranch like to come and address the council?
They'd be asking you, Dave.
Okay, well, there's no mad rush, so what's the?
Well, I had a couple of questions. I prefer option two, that was a proposed option, and I'm not too excited about staff coming up with an optional one. We have a current sphere of influence, plenty of land in that sphere of influence. If you ask pretty much everybody what would want to be in the sphere of influence of the City of Yuba City, I mean, we can go to the Sutter County line, go to the airport. We have, we've done our studies, we have the sphere of influence, we talked about creating jobs and annexing that area, that the piece, the Newcombe Ranch, we always wanted to have that. But to just randomly throw in another mile of properties, that's a couple of things. One, cost is borne by the taxpayer, the city then. We've done, we've got master plans sitting on the shelf, specific plans sitting on the shelf that are doing nothing. And we spent city money on that, like the Lincoln East specific plan, it wasn't paid by the landowner, we paid for it. How much money are we going to keep spending on these plans when they're not real? The Newcombe plan as proposed, which is option two, is real. It's a small amount of land, it straightens out the, and I have no problem going straight Stewart line, it straightens out the city line, but to just, I have a problem with going, there's no logic going to Berry Road, I mean, we could go to Tudor, and we could go to Live Oak and buttes. I'm just not thrilled about this. I would like to, for decades, we've been, we have a plan, P's Township, Bog, we went out with the Stewart a little bit. Since then, it made sense to, we needed prime industrial commercial land on the highway, and I think that's great with the Newcombe Ranch. But to just go out, just because while we're doing this plan, let's go ahead and throw a bunch of more land in there, and ask the landowners about it, I'm just not excited, and I'm not, we've got a budget deficit, we're trying to balance, maybe, you know, we're asking our police fire to take cuts, and then we're going to spend a whole bunch of money to do something that nobody's asking for. Nobody's asking south of Stewart, or that, oh yeah, put me in this sphere of influence. We don't have a shortage of land in our current sphere of influence. We have it, one landlord proposing, why don't we stick to that? And then that proposal is proposing to pay its own cost, why are we changing that proposal to where we're going to be paying for this project, and who knows when if it gets dropped, or whoever get our money back? Lincoln East was five, six years ago, and we spent the city's money, and we haven't seen a penny back. That's my?
Any other questions, comments from the?
Just to the mayor, just a comment that I have, is, I think this is a wise move on the city's part to at least go down to Stewart Road with this, straighten that line out. I would like to see the efforts really made to the north of that in the future, with annexing in the Keyhole area and completing that whole area up there far quicker, so we can bring in our BEAT Six into police service in a shorter period of time than an effort further to the south. But certainly, straightening out the line to Stewart Road makes a lot of sense to me, and I'd be very supportive of that, but I'd like to see our efforts working northward to complete that Keyhole area, or the centerpiece up Highway ninety-nine corridor.
Councilman Starkey.
What John said, I don't need to reiterate the whole thing. I agree with you, Aaron, that we do need to look at the sphere, and by us going to Stewart Road is not annexing.
No, not Stewart.
Yeah, I know.
Not for Stewart Road, obviously Stewart Road.
Right, but I just want to clarify, we're not annexing it, this is a one step of many steps to come through. You know, if the property owners, obviously the first step is to see if we want to bring the property in the sphere, on the boundary line that the county's kind of drawn for is number one. Number two is go through all the processes, then at that point in time, perhaps the Newcombe Ranch LLC would want to bring that into the city for various reasons, and the other people may not want to bring it into the city, which is okay too. But if we're looking at this, at this point in time, in the larger economy scales, yes, you know, there's a cost for it, but when you're going to have to go back and do it again in another year, it's going to cost twice as much than it is at this point in time. So if you're allowing, if, like Aaron said, if we're allowing the door to open, I think it's a fair process for us to explore that idea, if the other landowners wish to want the sphere, want to be a part of the sphere. Doesn't mean we're going to develop it, doesn't mean, nothing's going to happen for twenty years, but at least we're looking at those options at one point in time. So I'm in favor of staff's recommendation.
If you're looking for a motion, I'll.
Okay, got a motion?
I'll make a motion to, there we go, with option two.
I had a question. Yes, with that, I'll second that motion, but go ahead.
Aaron, we're just talking about the shaded crosshatched area.
No, no, actually, just to clarify, so let me back up. So, this is property owned by Newcombe Ranch property owners. This is other property that is, with other property owners that are partnering, if you will. And that's really necessary, quite honestly, to make the connectivity finding for LAFCO.
Understood.
So, in addition to that, they're proposing to prepare a technical master plan for this area. Now, what that means has some interpretation, but what they're doing is, is doing the technical studies for that, but they are not proposing, as part of their proposal, to do pre-annexation zoning for this.
Understood.
Okay. What we're suggesting is, is that because we're going out and talking to these people as part of this technical master plan effort, that why not talk to these people over here, talk to these people over here to see what the interest is? Because they may or may not be aware of this. We're not committing to anything, it's simply going out and ask a question, do you want to be a part of this or not?
Thank you.
And how bad do you want to be a partner?
Sure.
Then we would come back to the city council and say, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, and then get your feedback on how we proceed.
Seems quite logical to me, very good. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Bush.
You're welcome.
Great, we've got a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of clarification. I think that Councilman Mon made a motion, and I think you may have seconded it, but your second was counter to what you were stating earlier. It sounded like you were proposing option one, whereas Councilman Mon was proposing option two. And option two is the smaller version, option one is the broader version.
I was going off of what staff's recommendation was, and that was to go after the whole thing.
Right. So I think you have a motion on the floor from Councilman Mon with regard to option two, that would require a second.
Yeah, then I want to withdraw my second for that motion. What's your pleasure?
I'd make a motion to go with option one.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mon's motion dies for lack of a second.
Yes.
Yep. So now we need another motion.
I would move option one.
Okay. I will second that. Yeah, we've got a motion, second, all in favor, signify by, you know what, let's get a roll call vote, Carol.
Councilmember Buckland?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Mon?
No.
Mayor Gill?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Business from the city council, city council reports, Councilmember Buckland.
Had the opportunity here last week to attend the Government Relations Committee for SECOG, and just an interesting couple of notes that should be made about our local transportation funds is, as our transportation infrastructure, meaning buses, trains, and everything in the region, begin to become dated, there is going to be more and more demand on that funding source through SECOG. So we're really looking at some regional efforts to build a hub, some of our transportation that would be coming out of the Yuba-Sutter area, possibly up into the Natomas area, and linking that in a more logical manner with a train route that would not fall up into the Natomas rooftops, but more follow the I-five corridor out to the airport and into the downtown area. This is going to be a long battle, and it's one worth making a fight for, because we think that by utilizing a more direct route, we can reduce a lot of the operational wear and tear off of our commuter buses, even into the downtown area. So it's making a lot of sense, we're getting some support out of plaster for the very same reasons, being able to hub at that location and take riders into the downtown or out to the airport with that. Also, got back from that, just in time to be able to attend our, the Yuba City Unified School District meeting, was there with Councilmember Starkey, and a great, about a two-hour meeting with some of the city staff, the members of the school board, and also county representatives that were there, and just talking through some of the different options that are available for a number of different projects. But, you know, most notably, what was brought up and brought forward was some of the homeless issues that we're having, and some housing options that may be coming forward in the near future. Also, went to a low-noticed goal-setting meeting with this, with our council, spent a good part of the day doing that. It was, it was well-run, a very smooth operation, and I think we came out of that with a very good and clear set of goals and priorities into the future for this very body. Also participated, just on another note, kind of through my past association with the police department, because I've continued on with it through fifty-some programs, but I was able to go up and assist with the Ever Fifteen Minutes program up at Live Oak High School. And very interestingly, came back to Yuba City to spend my tax dollars at a local restaurant, and where we were met by a young lady that had, back in two thousand eight, had been through that very same program up at Live Oak High School, and spoke very highly of the fact that that is, part of her decision-making process not to drink and drive was through that program. And so she spoke with us for quite a few minutes there at the restaurant, she's a worker there, and it was very encouraging to be able to come back, and having put two days into it, to be able to hear that kind of information come back. Tomorrow morning, I have no idea what's going to happen, but I'm going to go to a pension reform meeting down in Sacramento, and I'll be attending with some other local representatives of our community, so I will bring back a reported letter date on that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mon.
That was great, spending the time with the city department heads and the consultant. You always learn more about the, what you're struggling with, or trying to accomplish as your goals and objectives for the city, and it was a great, great exercise, and hopefully we'll be able to accomplish those goals, we came out with some good thought processes and good plans. Other than that, I have a Housing Authority meeting tomorrow, and Yuba-Sutter Transit Authority meeting Thursday, and had the LAFCO meeting this week, but that got continued due to lack of any agenda items.
Maybe you'll have some now. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Starkey.
Thank you for this opportunity. I too had the opportunity to attend the goal-setting session with many of you here in the audience tonight, and it was, it was good. It was nice to reiterate all the things that we're working on and reprioritize things. And this year, I would like to see if we can have more of a thumb on the pulse, if you will, and keep, be reported to from you all on how we're doing with some of our priorities. So I'm looking forward to that this year. I had the opportunity to attend the retirement party for Assistant Chief Webster. I was really concerned about how he's going to transition from working life to retired life. Ended up having a meeting with him Sunday morning on the golf course, he seems to be doing pretty well, I just thought you might want to know. So, anyway, that's, I have a meeting with Councilman Mon for the transit, and then I have Waste Management coming up, and the meeting with the school district was very beneficial, so thank you very much for this opportunity.
Great, thank you. A lot of the same meetings, goal-setting meeting, no matter how many times you go through that, it's always nice, new ideas, new people in the sense, I think a lot of our staff was promoted to higher positions, so it's always kind of nice to hear their insight and see what some of their priorities they are, and kind of mesh them together and get everybody on the same page, saying, yep, we're headed in the right direction. So that was very, very nice. The city manager and I met with the Homeless Consortium, I believe it was last week, last Friday. Great ideas, seems to, that they're on the right track, going to be working with HUD to see if they can get some houses, some housing released, and have, be able to transition in and out, some kind of a program, so that's kind of nice, because, you know, homeless, this is something that continues on within our community. Spoke with a government class today at Yuba City High School, from one-thirty to three o'clock, so an hour and a half, talked about city, talked about city budgets, talked about everything the kids wanted to know. I did correct them on one notion that they thought, you know, what city council members make, and so we had ranges anywhere from seventy thousand to one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year. So I said, well?
Really?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's pretty good.
Wait until their taxpayers.
Yeah.
Keep me in check.
So I told them, you must be talking about supervisors, you're kidding, it's not us. So they were quite astonished to learn what we actually make on a monthly basis, and the committees we serve on, the time, and they all looked at me like, you're doing this, why? So we do it for the love of our community. We have, you know, one of the things that we've always tried to do is reach out to the youth, and I've always felt it's important, either by, you know, our setting up our Facebook accounts, Twitter accounts, we've just got to engage our youth, and through our youth commission as well. We were able to hold one meeting in the spring at River Valley High School with the kids there. We have another meeting scheduled for April ninth, which is going to be a special city council meeting at ten o'clock at Yuba City High School, I believe it'll be in the North Gym. Expecting about four hundred kids, pretty much the entire senior class is going to be there, so we're looking forward to that meeting. With that, that is all I have for today's meeting. Thank you guys very much, meeting is adjourned.